Good evening, everyone. I'm Laura Shifrin and I'm calling the meeting of the Planning Board for Monday, May 23rd, to order at 6:37 PM. Thank you for your patience with our technical difficulties. I'd like to have a roll call, please, of the members.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Ian Ortiz.
Go Carol, go Carol.
Okay. Carol Hofstra is present. Go ahead.
Ian Ortiz is present.
Michael?
Mike Verosco present.
And Laura Shifrin. At this time, I'm going to, with that roll call being done, I'm going to appoint Ian as our associate to be a voting member for this evening's meeting. Will everyone stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you to our military and our veterans. The meeting is being recorded, which has been announced by the recording. And under 1.4, I would just like to say, and most of you are familiar with this, and that's the protocol for meetings and how they're conducted. Beth, thank you for sending those out to everyone, and I would just like to keep order of the meeting to move smoothly. If you would like to be addressed, make sure that the chair addresses you. So there's no conversations between the others unless you're going through the chair first. I'd appreciate that. 1.5 is, we do have a vacancy on the board, and we have received two volunteer requests. And one of them is from Ian, who's our current associate, and also from Kim Craven, who did notice that she couldn't be here this evening. So, I would like to hold on to her application at this time, but I would ask for a motion to appoint, to have Ian appointed as a sitting member of the board, beginning July 1st and ending at the next election. Do I hear that motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ian Ortiz as a voting member, effective 1 July until the next election.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd like a roll call vote, please. Carol?
Carol Hofstra, yes.
Michael?
Mike Verosco, yes.
Ian, do you accept the position?
Ian Ortiz, yes, I accept the position.
And Laura Shifrin, yes. Welcome. We will pass your nomination on to the Board of Selectmen for their next meeting, hopefully. Thanks again, Ian.
Yeah. Madam Chair, may I just have clarification on that motion? Um, I didn't quite hear what Carol said, but I think what she meant to say was to appoint Ian to fill the full member vacancy that's currently posted.
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, so is my understanding that it's actually a recommendation for appointment, and that goes to the Planning Board, to the Board of Selectmen, correct?
It's a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen they appoint.
Okay, perfect. So then, that's the way I'll write the motion, it's a recommendation.
Yeah, sorry, it wasn't written, no.
I know, I was thinking about it.
But Carol, you did a good job, that's okay.
Thank you, Beth. Okay, great. So I'll move that forward to the, yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you again, Ian. 1.6, approval of minutes, May 9th. Does, I do have a couple of changes. Does anyone else have any other changes to the minutes of May 9th? No? No? I'll go through. Page 4. Just the insertion of a word under 2.2, second paragraph, line 8. Help if I put my glasses on. Received and read into the record. So the word "read" needs to be put in there. And, under work session, 3.1. There was a vote to hire an engineering firm, but the engineering, the name isn't there, so if you would insert the name of that firm, that's in the motion. And then, on page 6, under 4.2. After the motion was read, Kim Craven did thank the Board for their approval of the stormwater. Okay? Anything else? Could I entertain a motion, then, for the approval of the minutes of May 9th, with the three amendments inserted this evening?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes with the amendments made.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, I'd like a roll call vote, please, to approve the minutes as amended for May 9th.
Carol Hofstra, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Mike Verosco, yes.
And Laura Shifrin, yes. Thank you very much. And now we go into the work session. And 2.1, Seaver Road Preliminary Subdivision Application and Plans. Peer Review Comments of Hancock Associates Survey, Inc. Is that you, Joe?
It is, Madam Chair. Good evening. For the record, Joe Pesnola from Hancock Associates, your civil engineering peer reviewer. Happy to review our May 18th correspondence to the Board regarding the preliminary subdivision. We did review the three-page plan set, and the application material, which included a list of proposed waivers. We essentially went through the waivers first, and some of the waivers are either not applicable, or maybe premature. This is a comprehensive list that normally would go with a definitive subdivision, so they're asking for waivers that have to do with detail, and that detail's not shown on the plan, so for the Board to really deliberate on a waiver request, you need that detail. So, the first waiver had to do with, to allow waiver from, to allow only the $2,400 application fee in lieu of the additional $10,000 consultant fee. I think that's now moot. I think we gave you a proposal for for peer review, which was considerably less than $10,000, and I think, I understand that the applicant paid that, so to the degree that the Board needs to waive from the $10,000 down to, I don't know that that's necessarily a waiver, I think it's, the Board has it in their, in your regulations to take the $10,000 for consulting fees, regardless of the size of project or the scope. Anytime the Board takes a consulting fee, it goes into what's known as a 53G account. And, that the consultant invoices the town, and the town pays from that fund. Anything that's not used is returned to the applicant, so I guess that's, that's why we think that one might not be necessary. The next few have to do with plan sheets. And they're really more applicable to the definitive with regards to form and content. Actually, they asked for a waiver to go from a 40 scale to a 50 scale, but the plans are at 100 scale. So I think this might be something more appropriate for the, again, for the definitive. So I think, if I'm, if I believe the process to be, the normal process that the Planning Boards do, you're giving the, at this juncture with preliminary, you're giving the applicant some feedback. You're not voting to grant waivers at this juncture. You wouldn't, you wouldn't formally vote to grant waivers until the definitive subdivision. So, I think the discussion on waivers here is just that, it's to give feedback. Waiver with regards to locating trees, you know, I think this is a forested site, and I think to the degree the Board can understand that, especially in the area where work is being done, there are some substantial trees on Seaver, Seaver Road itself, some very old trees. So, I think maybe a waiver from a blanket requirement to locate every tree on site might not be appropriate. These are large lots, there's two 9-acre lots and a 2- to 3-acre lot. So maybe just within the area of of the work itself, for the roadway. Madam Chair, looks like Mr. Graus has his hand up, might have a point of clarification.
Hi, good evening. Joe, just, I just want to save you some time on some of these. The, we submitted the waiver request because we were required to as part of the middle, but on that list we submitted, there are a number of them that we're not asking for waivers on, so number 4, 5, 6, 7, 10, 11, 13, 15, and 17. We're not, we're not asking for waivers on those items.
Can you say that again, just so I can mark them?
Sure. So, on your list, numbers 4, 5, 6, 7, 10, 11, 13, 15, and 17. We are not asking for waivers on those. Those are items that we asked for waivers before, they were denied before. So we're just gonna do, we're gonna meet that requirement on those items.
Thank you, that will save time.
Yep.
Thank you, Paul, for that clarification. I appreciate.
So, just to pick up number 8 in our letter 17514N5B to C, wave providing existing left and right side elevations on a profile. That might have been fine on a previous submission where they were using the existing right-of-way. This is a brand-new road, and it's standard engineering practice to show left, center, and right. To waive the requirement providing pro forma financial analysis, we defer to the Board on what your standard practice is, and whether or not on smaller projects such as this, whether that's a standard practice. Traffic study is the next one, number 12. We would just ask if the applicant would provide some justification and maybe some trip generation for the three homes. Just to give it a, to quantify, okay, how much traffic is there going to be? And it kind of puts things in context, and allows the Board to then deliberate on on that. My opinion, three homes aren't gonna generate a whole lot of traffic, it's fairly quiet neighborhood, and I don't, I don't think it's necessarily out of the question to grant that waiver. The waiver, the 14 is a waiver out of necessity, based on portions of the right-of-way that they are improving, but that they can't control with regards to it, to the width. So there's about a 250-foot section of Seaver that they're making improvements from where the pavement ends at the driveway for number 40, Seaver, to where they hook a left and go into the site, and are, at that point, creating a new right-of-way. So at that point, they can comply, but in that first section on Seaver proper, they're limited to what Seaver is. And Seaver's an old, what they call an old two-rod road. It's got many sections of it, have walls on it. So it's, you know, 33, 35, 37 feet wide, depending on how the farmers put the, how they measured things and got it in there, but essentially a rod is 16 and 1/2 feet. A two-rod road is somewhere around 33 feet, so wall-to-wall is that minimum width, so it just doesn't have the 40. And we think it's appropriate if the Board feels development of these lots is appropriate. It's, again, a waiver by necessity. To waive, 16 is 17516C, to waive sidewalks, and that seems appropriate with regards to the surroundings. Olive Seaver doesn't have sidewalks, Olive Seaver is 16, 18 feet wide. Very quiet roadway, as you know. Just doesn't make sense to start putting sidewalks to nowhere. I don't, I don't think, you know, you probably have to get downtown before you have sidewalks anywhere. 18 is 17517A10, to allow construction of an 18-foot-wide roadway in lieu of the 26-foot-wide roadway surface. I think, I think this needs discussion and deliberation and some input from the Fire Department. And, the issue here is that, in 2016, the state of Massachusetts enacted regulations, fire access regulations, 527 CMR 1.0, which serves to define Fire Department access requirements. And it had always been left up to the Chiefs, and the Chiefs used the National Fire Protection Institute guidelines as their kind of guidebook, but in 2016, it became, it has the force, the full force of regulation. Those regulations include a fire access plane that's a minimum 20 feet wide. Now, the interpretation has been that that doesn't need to be 20 feet of pavement. It could certainly be 18 feet of pavement, as long as there are, there is a clear passage of 20 feet. So it could be, it could be 18 feet with, you know, one-foot gravel shoulders on either side. As long as those are kept clear for the Fire Department, then then it can comply, but I would certainly recommend that the Board seek the input of the Fire Department here with regards to that. They are providing a full turnaround, and they, you know, can demonstrate to the Fire Department that it meets, that it meets the local, the subdivision requirements, and, you know, they can get into whether or not their largest piece of apparatus can make it around there, and certainly, I think they'd be willing to make tweaks to that. But that is a, it's also an existing situation on the 2,000 feet of Seaver. That's already paved and built. But this is a new subdivision, this is under your Board's purview, and you do have subdivision regulations in which you require 26 feet. The last one is 1917517E, to waive the curbing requirement on the roadway surface in favor of an open drainage design. And I would set that one aside, as far as discussion, until the design is developed, so that we understand that. Curbing, many times, is used for drainage, to channel drainage down to catch basins and so forth. And, an open, you know, countryside drainage system is appropriate, as long as it's designed properly, and provisions are made for proper snow maintenance and proper maintenance in general. So, that is the waivers. I think we then went through just the submission requirements for preliminary, which are not too onerous. And they do comply, there's a couple of points there that I'm sure Paul can update. I don't think they necessarily materially impact the Board's review of this subdivision. I think it's fairly clear what they're trying to do here. They're trying to establish a new road of right-of-way with a full cul-de-sac to access three lots. I think it's an appropriate design from that standpoint, to be able to introduce a cul-de-sac, a turnaround where one doesn't exist on Seaver. So, that's there. Our, we finished our letter with some general comments. And I think that's where the Board needs some additional information, and maybe that's available now. The first would be with respect to the existing right-of-way on Seaver past where they're going to hook the left and put the new right-of-way. It was alluded to in the application material, that Seaver is only an easement at that point, and that it would become part of, or it is part, will be part of Lot 3, with regards to the ownership. But there is, and will exist, the continued right to pass and repass for a property in Lunenburg that supposedly enjoys access rights. It certainly is utilizing those rights, and there is a property known as 50 Seaver that is in Lunenburg, that is at the end of Seaver, where the house was built in 2006. And, it's the only way to get into that property at 50 Seaver, owned by Mr. and Mrs. Cohen. So, the questions will be, you know, exactly what is the status of Seaver? Not only there, but for all of the area that the applicant is utilizing. Is it a private right-of-way? Is the Board establishing a new right-of-way because it no longer exists? Is the Board modifying a right-of-way that does exist? And who has rights to it? What is the nature of those rights? And what is the ability of those right holders to do more? What the Board has to understand, the Board can't act on a subdivision such as this and step on existing rights. So the Board needs to understand the nature and format of those rights. So in the 250-foot section that they are improving, and staying within Seaver, technically, you are opening up the right of the landowner on the opposite side to come in and get a building permit, because now they are, they are on an improved road, to the degree that the Building Department believes that section is not currently brought up to standard. That landowner across the street could bring forward an A&R subdivision before this Board, and make argument that the Boards need to find that the roadway servicing the A&R subdivision is appropriate, and its length, and its width, and completeness, and so forth. I'm sure you've grappled with that subject matter when reviewing A&Rs. So you can, you can move that forward and say, what about the rest of Seaver? Could anyone that has rights to Seaver continue to enjoy those rights and expand upon those rights to make improvements to it? While I did not look to see if either Townsend or Lunenburg had prohibitions to developments through other communities, the Cohens with 10 acres in Lunenburg could make improvements to Seaver to extend it further and subdivide, and that would be subject to both approval of your Board as well as the Lunenburg Planning Board. So there's just questions, and what I'd recommend is, it's not, it's not my, I'm here to review what's been submitted. The Board is here to review the package that was submitted. If you have questions, you pose it back to the applicant. And I think you just need the documentation and the understanding of all of that. And I would recommend that that be in writing, so that you understand moving forward, when you get to definitive, that those questions have all been answered, and you fully understand what's going on. Because the preliminary subdivision process is one in which you're planning, you're agreeing to, to some degree, it's not binding, but you're agreeing to, okay, we like the geometry, and we think that this is appropriate. And, the, if we had the new Seaver roadway bending off to the left, in an arc, and someone were to have rights and continue to improve Seaver proper, heading towards Lunenburg, would that make a strange geometry at that intersection? In which it was a Y instead of maybe a 90-degree intersection? And it may impose some safety concerns with regards to the future. And, again, no one's proposing anything on that remaining section of Seaver right now, but I think it's the Board's job to look to the future.
Joe, can I shift for a moment?
Certainly.
Since the fact that this is a preliminary plan that we are reviewing, which meets all the criteria of our Land Use Coordinator and Planning Board staff. Mike, could I ask you, we had talked earlier about the explanation of the preliminary process into the definitive process. I think now would be a good time to do that before we finish this. Okay, thank you.
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah. I wanted to just offer to kind of give a quick introduction, because we haven't done too many preliminary subdivisions here in town, and we have some new members as well, so I want to make sure everyone has a full understanding of what's going on. This application is for a preliminary subdivision, which is different than a definitive subdivision. The preliminary subdivision is, in fact, the preliminary application is really just that, it's preliminary. It's, in fact, actually, can I get share screen permission? I can, I'll pull up the code, and I'll share it in front of folks, if that works for votes.
Give me one second, Mike, and I'll get you there.
And while Dave is doing that, I just would like to remind you all, then, unless you're speaking, please be on mute. And while Dave is doing that, I just would like to remind you all that unless you're speaking, please be on mute.
Okay, Mike, you're a co-host. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Can everyone see the town code I've got up in front of me? So this is the Planning Board Regulations off Ecode for Preliminary Subdivision. It gives us a little background on this. In particular, it highlights that this is a optional. So this is a it may be submitted to the Planning Board and the Board of Health. It is required for non-residential subdivisions. So if you were, say, creating a subdivision, an industrial subdivision, you would have to have a preliminary plan. But residential subdivisions do not require the submission of preliminary plans. The idea is that this is something where an applicant can come, have some conversation with folks in the office, have an early chat with the planning board before the official application, that definitive subdivision application comes in. So if they can get some guidance and start streamlining the process moving forward. There are some requirements in here that I won't go over because they're very technical requirements about scaling and what how many copies of plans and things like that. But the, one of the key relevant things is right here in front. The approval of the preliminary subdivision is tentative and non-binding upon the planning board. What that means is if the planning board decides to approve a preliminary subdivision plan, they are in no way bound to approve the definitive subdivision if the applicant chooses to continue with a definitive subdivision at a later date. This is just a good way to have that kind of conversation and get things going. I really have appreciated this process and being able to sit down with the applicant and have some extra time reviewing the plans and knowing that we can help kind of understand what everyone's working on and have everyone have some eyes on it and start thinking about it before we get further on down the line. As I mentioned, there's some technical stuff. I'm just gonna go right by that because a lot of this stuff is pretty boilerplate in terms of you need to have like a scale and a compass rose. A few specific things about private ways need to be labeled, public ways need to be labeled. No street may be labeled public way unless accompanied by such evidence, kind of to speaking to the conversation we're having about roadways. A big feature of the preliminary subdivision is this engineering review, which we're having some conversation about tonight, which is great. But when it comes down to that approval or disapproval of preliminary plans, it basically, the plans must satisfy design standards applicable to definitive subdivisions, but doesn't have all of the specific requirements that a definitive subdivision will need. The board can approve the plan with or without modifications. And if there are any issues, it's, the board has to put forth information about specific issues that might need to be addressed moving forward. That's kind of the preliminary process. When you get into that definitive, it in some ways, a lot of the information that is generated out of the preliminary can be used again. But in no way does it supersede any of the requirements that are normally associated with the definitive subdivision. So you still have to go through the process. You still have to have engagement with various boards that may be applicable and commissions. There is nothing that is, allows you to kind of skip something. So this is a great process for being able to have communication with the applicant about the project. And there is a good way that everyone, both the applicant and the boards and the commissions, can get a better understanding of what the project's going to be like going forward in a way that can help make things less complicated down the line. But there's no chance that the, something could get missed at this stage because it's the preliminary subdivision. All of those controls and mechanisms that are important for everyone to make sure they follow are, can then be followed in the definitive subdivision application. Additionally, that's why tonight is not a public hearing. Public hearings are not required for preliminary subdivisions. Generally speaking, it's just kind of coming together with this decision that you'll, that it gets made. Let the planning board and the Board of Health get to kind of view on. Board of Health, I was just speaking with them earlier. They're still kind of looking at where they're at right now, but we'll get some feedback for for the planning board moving forward on that. I don't want to talk for too long about this without at least opening up, make sure people are understanding me. I'm trying to pull back my screen so I can see what people are saying. Does anyone have any questions? I kind of tried to keep it simple and broad to start, and then we can dig in if there's anything specific.
I I particularly wanted this information out for the board itself so that they understood. Because I don't remember seeing one before and I've been on five or so years. So so we have that now. And does, do the board members have any questions? Hearing and seeing none. I have one. And that would be, maybe it's obvious, maybe it's not, but would you then still require another site review, peer review be done once the definitive comes in? Is there another one that's required?
That's a great question. There is nothing in the preliminary subdivision or in the definitive subdivision that there's nothing in the definitive subdivision that says you get to not do the normal process when you have previously gone through preliminary. If you have gone through it, the requirement, the only references to preliminary subdivision and definitive subdivision are if there was a preliminary plan done, please include that information. And if there were comments like, we need to see X and Y, please note how you, what you've done to address that. At this point, there isn't something in the preliminary that, as I mentioned, allows you to change something in the process of the definitive. It's still the same definitive process. And that's just kind of how the regulations are at this point. So any requirement that's listed under a definitive subdivision still needs to be met. If there was a document that was generated in the preliminary that would also meet the requirement of a definitive, the applicant can certainly put that in their application packet and move it forward. But again, it's, that's the thing to remember is it's two very distinct, separate applications that are going to be considered the preliminary and then the definitive.
Thank you, Mike, for that explanation.
Can I ask one thing, Madam Chair? This is Beth. I just wanted to ask Mike a question. How does, could you explain how this affects the timeline? We had discussed that if a preliminary subdivision is approved, then the timeline changes for the definitive. Do you understand?
So it's my understanding that there is a 45-day timeline for preliminary subdivision determination. We are, I believe, at 14 days since it was accepted by the board. So I'm glad, good for us for being on top of it and we're keeping this on the jacket. The, again, the definitive subdivision is a separate process. So there isn't a requirement that the definitive subdivision be submitted in a specific time following the preliminary. For example, the applicant could just say, you know what, I'm retiring, moving to Florida. I'm never putting this in. There's no requirement that they follow through the next step. So I didn't see anything in that regarding that. Was there something else, Beth, that you caught that you were wanting to bring to the attention? Or, Madam Chair, was it?
Actually, good. Sorry, through through you, Madam Chair. I did. Once, if a preliminary is approved, once the definitive is submitted, the timeline for approval by the planning board is 90 days. It's a residential approved preliminary. If there is no preliminary approval, then it's 135 days. So I just wanted to mention that. It's a, it's, you know, just a change of timeline.
Okay, so if you add 45 and 90, you get 135.
Right. So that's the idea. What I'm not sure of is is what kind of time, yeah, you had mentioned that they could submit the definitive anytime or not at all. So, okay.
That is correct. Technically, because there's no requirement to do a preliminary, you could drop off your preliminary application or there's no requirement to complete a preliminary. You could drop off your preliminary application and then walk in the next day with your definitive. I don't know why you would. I wouldn't recommend it. But there there isn't any specific regulation. I think this was designed with the intent of trying to make land use and planning a little more accessible to applicants in the process and that they could come when it's a little bit of a lower stakes and start the ball rolling, ask some questions, get some direct feedback without having to make a full commitment on a definitive plan. Maybe the hope was that there could become kind of collaborative communication and so people on the application side would have a better understanding of the process and being able to make more informed decisions moving forward. And at the same time, the planning board would have a better understanding of what the applicant's goals and needs are so that they could make sure that what is relevant to the, have extra time in some ways for consideration. Because if there's a gap between that 45 days and that longer timeline that Beth mentioned, that could be, you could be sitting at home and say, well, wait a minute, what about this question? I never got to ask this. You'll have that opportunity for a little extra. Oh, somebody's coming into the waiting room.
Okay. So, Robert?
I'd just like to comment. I think the preliminary review is a very good concept to use. It gives the applicant and the board and the community more communication. A lot of developers want to get some idea about the feasibility of a project and based upon the response in the local community. That would give them some kind of impression whether they should move forward or not or make major alterations to whatever they're trying to propose. So I think it's many times in my own profession, I it's so much more advantageous for the applicant to meet with the community, whether it's an informal hearing with the planning board or formal preliminary hearing like we're being proposed now or just stopping into the zoning offices and the assessors office and getting some general feedback because mostly people aren't aware of all the things that are involved in getting permits to begin with. So I think it's a wholesome approach for the community and for the applicant. And it's, it's, it's very productive in getting information. Those are my comments, but.
Thank you, Robert. Appreciate it. And thank you, Mike and Beth, for making good points. Joe, would you like to continue now, please?
Certainly, now too. I was just about done, but that's okay. So then my last point is just on the existing utilities. Just in a preliminary fashion, just what what, if any, is going on there. There is buried electric on Seaver that goes up to 50 on the Lunenburg property. So just understanding that, understanding what what the plan is for, even if it's just letting the board know. Plan is for any utilities that that do have to be brought to the site. It's probably just electric and and communication. And I'm not sure if there's don't believe there's water out there.
No, there isn't.
Yeah. So the wells and septic.
Yes. And like, I think it was stated, Mike stated that it's still at Board of Health look at this point.
Right. They do have soil testing in the area of the proposed septic. Did comment that, you know, a little bit of soil testing in the area of the stormwater would be nice to to be able to understand that a little bit, but again, it's preliminary, as Mike was saying. And those details could could wait for definitive. It's all up to what, what kind of feedback the applicant wants. The more detail, the more feedback. So.
Thank you very much, Joe. And I'd like to open it up to any representative from the applicant if you would like to make any statements to the board.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the record, David Plunkett, representing the applicant, taken notes of all the information provided by the peer review and certainly, you know, I know that the applicant will work with the town to address any issues that are raised here tonight. And I don't have any issues to discuss other than, you know, I think that it is a very good proposal. It's a beautiful parcel of land, which would make a great location for the proposed houses to be built there on. So that that's all I have at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, David. Paul, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, a couple of things. Naturally, we do, we do plan on providing details showing how the Cohen's easement, the roadway, the former roadway was, it was given up and we have title to it. So alls it is now is an easement for one particular dwelling. So we've located all of his utilities. We're gonna, we're gonna show those on a definitive. We're gonna show how the grading and his, you know, access to the proposed road will operate. One thing, we do plan on doing more testing for the stormwater, obviously. We just had some conceptual locations laid out. But those details, you know, where we need to curb, that we need some catch basins, things like that will will come out on a definitive. One thing we did before, and I'll just mention it again, is because we know the board is probably not interested in creating a bunch of frontage to give the ability to create additional lots. We actually left a strip where we own the entire, you know, wall to wall on the abandoned or discontinued portion of Seaver. We actually left a strip to, which would prohibit somebody coming in to, through the A and R process to add more lots. Other than that, you know, we plan on providing all the additional information that we're not asking for the wave, it's the trees and all those things. And the testing was all witnessed by the Board of Health also that the we did four deep holes and two perks on each lot. They were all witnessed by Nishova. So the Board of Health should be good with that. We did go through conservation. After the wetlands were flagged and located, we filed a request for I can't remember the verbiage. Well, it's when you ask them to go out and verify that the that the wetland flags are are correct and conservation did go out. We've got our whatever that term is. We got approval from conservation on the delineation anyways.
Okay.
I think that's good for four years. And the, the other thing a preliminary does as far as time goes, it does give you a seven-month stay on a zoning change if you submit a definitive within that seven-month period. But I don't, I don't think there's any zoning changes in the works anyways. But that's one good thing a preliminary does for an applicant.
Mike Crowley, do you have any information from conservation? I know you may or may not. I'm just asking if you.
I don't have any information for them at this time. So I don't know exactly what went, what I am, the applicant is referring to that, that could very likely true. I just don't know off the top of my head. So I'm sorry to say I don't have any good information for you at this time.
Any other board member that would like to make any comments or have questions for the applicant or for the engineer? Seeing none. I think, Beth, am I allowed to ask for a motion to approve this preliminary subdivision?
I believe you can. I
Well, I thought that we, that we could, given the information that we were given and the discussion that we've now had.
Yeah, I mean, if the Board of Health, did you want, I mean, the Board of Health hasn't weighed in. You could wait for that. I mean, they.
I'm wondering if that makes a difference.
I don't know. What do you think, Mike?
For the preliminary, will that make a difference? I mean, it may make a difference as to whether or not the applicant goes forward with his definitive. But upon this review and with as, as But upon this review and with, as, as Paul just stated, they had their testing done with the Board of Health, so.
Well, the only reservation I have is that part of the process is the Board of Health may get a, well, it's a little fuzzy for me. Mike, you might want to take this because it's, it's, they should have seen a plan and they haven't. So they had 45 days to comment and they haven't properly been notified. It was my understanding that the applicant was to notify them, but apparently that may not be the case. So I don't know. Maybe you could ask Mike.
Okay. Mike or the applicant, do you have any other further information on plans given to the Board of Health?
Madam Chair, if I can?
Yes, Mike?
Yeah, I can say that the Board of Health did receive a copy of the plans earlier. And they are, they, I spoke with them and they have their folks looking at it. And they should be able to get back to us maybe as soon as tomorrow with their comments. If, in terms of the, whether or not you can approve at this point, there's nothing, I don't think anything in the regulations that says you can't. But it was put in the regulations that it, in the planning board regulations, that it would be going through the process of the Board of Health and the planning. And I just, I, the applicant may be able to speak to this. I feel a little guilty about the idea of if the, if the applicant paid for an application to get reviewed by the planning board and the Board of Health, and then they don't get that information from the Board of Health after the fact, that would, I just, I'm curious about that. That just, I feel like it would be better to, especially since we've got a 45 day timeline and we're only 14 days in.
Okay, so the Board of Health has that timeline and we would be able to meet, does this go before the elected Board of Health? Or is it just Nishoba Board of Health that you're waiting for information on? Does it go, do they make their report and go through the Board of Health elected officials?
That's a great question. So to be honest, this is the first time we've had one of these come through the office since I've started. And so we're, we're learning a little bit. So thanks for the compassion on that. I did speak with the Board of Health today and the Board of Health does have a meeting this week. I don't know whether or not they intend to simply have it, keep it administrative and engineering review in-house, or if they would like to bring it to the Board of Health meeting, which could be this week or the next following meeting. I can follow up with that if that's something you'd like.
Okay, well, I get the gist. So I'm, if it pleases everyone on the board, I will ask that this be put on the next, our next agenda, which I believe it is June 13th.
Yep.
Is that correct? Hopefully by then the Board of Health has given us their decision or remarks in reference to this, and then we can move forward. I haven't heard anything to the negative, so pending what comes through on that, Beth, I think that you can draft a decision that we can review for, on the 13th. Okay?
Yep. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Robert?
I know I'm a recent, recently joined this board. I don't have a lot of information on the project. Is that available now or have you seen it all or?
Yeah, and it should be in the portal for you online. Or if you see Beth or Mike, they're, they will be able to give you whatever information there is at Town Hall. So you'll be able to see that way before, you can see it anytime, starting tomorrow, certainly.
From what we, what we know now, it all comprised with the zoning and everything else and all this, the land use requirements as far as we know.
Yes, Beth and Mike both went through the application and it was all intact.
Okay.
Had everything we needed. So now what they're saying is we just don't have the Board of Health report. So I think that we would be good to do it on the 13th.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Robert, just so that you know, none of us have gone through a preliminary before. None of us on the board, nor staff. So we are all learning. Okay, so I am ready to move on to 2.2. Thank you, everyone, for your participation this evening.
Oh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I just, I had put the, the David Plunkett speaking.
Sorry.
So relative to the Board of Health, you know, they have done all the pits and everything else. And the preliminary is not going to circumvent the Board of Health at all in terms of their input in the review and their part of the final process relative to the ultimate final subdivision plans, or definitive subdivision plan to be submitted. You know, this is though a situation where time is sometimes of the essence in trying to move forward. And what we consider to have a lot of very, very good feedback here through the process of this preliminary to this point. And, you know, our hope would be that if, you know, rather than postponing for another, you know, whatever period was three weeks, I believe, you indicated, if we could get, you know, a vote for the purposes of moving forward, fully understanding that nothing is being done to circumvent the input of the, of the Board of Health. Or in also in light of the fact that the Board of Health has been involved, you know, relative to, you know, what's going on in the site. And that would be our hope, so we could move forward with the definitive sooner rather than later.
I am, Beth, can I just ask, is there a reason why we can't meet on the 6th?
I, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm wondering if this might be a question for the peer review, the peer review engineer. Just, just a thought, whether to proceed without Board of Health comment. Just a thought.
Joe? Any comment?
But, Madam Chair, I, there's not a requirement. There's not a requirement for them to even be here. So it's my opinion that there's, you can accept what you're accepting. It's, your decision is not binding. So if there were something earth shattering that came up with the Board of Health, that's going to come out during the definitive and it's a fresh start of definitive. Then you're, again, you have the, the option of doing whatever, whatever you need to do at definitive. There's, there's no looking back.
Anyone else have any comments? Because I, I think one of the things, and I know that Mike and Beth have both been proponents and very good at helping anyone coming in, asking for information, trying to help to streamline the process. Because we certainly haven't been streamlined in the past. Since I'm going to leave it up to the board, I'll, I'll need a motion from the board as to which way that they want to go. I don't see a problem with us approving it from the information that we've received and from our end. So I will leave it up to the board.
Madam Chair, may I just offer a point of clarity?
Yes, please.
I just want to make sure it's clear. So there was a comment earlier about the applicant not submitting to the Board of Health. When the applicant originally came and talked with me, I did not tell them that was a requirement. I was a little unclear myself on the language because the regulation for, says applicants may, may seek preliminary approval from the planning board and Board of Health. And the way I read it is they may proceed it from both. I'm now kind of getting understanding that it's one, you, you, the way I originally read it is you may get, you may get it from either. And now I'm beginning to read it as it's from both. So I just want to make sure that it's not perceived as a fault of the applicant, that the Board of Health didn't get that preliminary copy until today. Because that's totally me just working through the process and making sure everybody's got it from me. So I just wanted to make sure that no one was thinking, oh, well, geez, this guy never went down to the thing he was supposed to do. Because I never told him he was supposed to do it and it wasn't super clear. So that's something I would like to just make sure this is transparent.
Okay. And we certainly don't ever leave the Board of Health out of anything, especially in Townsend, because of our septic systems and our wells. But where they have the information, where they've already been to the property, where they have, the applicant is in touch with the Board of Health, I think that they'll be doing their job on this. And for us as a planning board to accept this preliminary and approve it does not seem to have any downsides to anyone. Because they, there isn't anything they can circumvent and they do need to do their definitive. And if this helps them to move their definitive along quicker and streamline the process, I think that that's what we're here to help do as well. Does anyone else have any comments before I ask for a motion?
May I ask for one more, Madam Chair? I'm reading the code and it says for approval or disapproval of preliminary plans. I just wanted to read through it before you make the motion because you may want to condition this approval.
Okay.
So it says, "To the extent that can be determined from the data submitted, the plans must satisfy all design standards applicable to definitive subdivisions. Number two, the board may approve the preliminary plan with or without modifications according to the provisions of MGL Chapter 41, Section 81 S. And number three, the board may, as part of such decision, identify specific issues that must be addressed in the definitive, including specific questions to be answered as part of the community impact statement. In the case of a non-residential subdivision or a residential subdivision exceeding 20 lots, these requirements may include the scope of a traffic study." So if you're going to vote to approve it, you will probably want to incorporate the, and my thought is you would probably want to incorporate what the peer review engineer has outlined as outstanding.
Okay. So I, I thought that the, I would think that the peer review was part of what we deliberated this evening. And we had answers from the applicant. So I think they both understand that. It would seem that, and, and Joe pointed out what those differences were and Paul did address them as to they're either going to, you know, so I think their definitive plan is going to show all of this, is what I'm understanding. And if you feel that it would be best to make the motion subject to the Board of Health's decisions on this or recommendations on this, I see nothing wrong with that.
And I would also add, if I may, I would also add the peer review engineers' letters, that each one of those are addressed in the motion.
Okay. All right. So it would appear that if the board pleases, you could make a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision application for Seaver Road with the attachment and adherence to of the peer review letters and subject to the Board of Health, which I think is, I want to say is understood by us. But it's, it would be okay to put that in. Having said that, do I have a motion? I have four members here.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Seaver Road preliminary subdivision subject to the Board of Health's decision and the peer review letters with attachments and adherence there too. Can I get that?
I second.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Give me a second to, is there any further discussion or clarification that's needed? Robert?
I, I don't, I don't want to obstruct this project and I'm, but it appears that Joe presented a lot of questions to this board tonight to think about and try to get a response from. And I didn't hear a response on the topics that I was available to hear. One of them was about the road intersection and whether it should be a Y shape or perpendicular shape. So I, I think there was an obligation here, or at least a request from the applicant to get more specific or more focused look at what they were doing so that when they bring the definitive one in, they would have, it wouldn't be as involved in opening up new subjects and topics. So I, I, I was going to suggest, rather than making a motion to approve or disapprove, that we can give them some, without specific feedback on what they're proposing, such as the driveways and the roads and stuff. We can probably do something like give them a favorable review and ask them to proceed. But I think the real intent of the preliminary review was to get specific questions or find out if there's something particularly of concern to the community. And so all I know right now, and again, you probably, other members have much more information than I had available to them. But the was, the conversation that Joe had was about the intersection and is there any impact? Is there a better way to do it? What about vision left and right and things like that? So I, I don't know, again, but I think that was the purpose of the preliminary hearing is to take a very candid, serious look at it so that they can come back with the, with the final one.
Robert, this, this was not a hearing?
No, I know.
Okay. And it's preliminary. And Paul, I'll let you make a comment if you like, but we have, there was quite a bit of discussion about the road. Paul, do you have anything succinctly that you might be able to help Robert with?
Well, I mean, basically, you know, there's, there's a lot of comments here. We plan on addressing them all. I don't really feel that, you know, putting the driveway detail, basically Cohen's got a driveway, an access easement, essentially a driveway. We're going to show that to show that it's functional and proper and all of that. But I can't see revising the preliminary plan for that. You know, we've got to address the, we've got to talk to the fire department about, and we've got to look at the rest of the road. Actually, we surveyed the whole road previously with eyes towards improvements and that kind of thing. So we've got, we've got to look at it in light of the, the new CMR on the 20 foot width. Last time we were going to do firewater storage too. So we still, we've got to talk to the fire department and see where they're at on that. So I mean, it's, there's a lot of things, maybe we're going to address everything on here. And, you know, go from there on the definitive.
Oh, then I, I, I think I'm at a disadvantage and I can tell already there's been a lot of thought and discussion on this. And you've taken the, the front line, trying to address them and foresee them ahead of time. So I apologize for obstructing this in any way. So. So that, I think, you know, your responsibility, I, I know what you're, you know what challenges you have on the saving, and what you have to meet. And, and apparently, the, the planning board already has got a lot of, given you a lot of input. So I, I don't have a problem.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Robert. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote. Carol?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Michael?
Mike Brost, yes.
And Robert?
Yes.
And Laura Schiffer, yes. So it's a unanimous vote. Beth, procedurally here, you'll write that up, and is that, is there anything for me to sign on the decision?
Well, this is again, a first time, so I would assume we, we should. And I believe a copy will go to the town clerk. And so I will certainly be able to draft something up, you know.
Okay, and then have the attachments with it. And so I guess I'll need a motion to sign the decision outside of the meeting. If I may have that from a board member, please, for the chair to sign outside of the meeting.
I shall move.
Robert, thank you. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Carol. Any further discussion? Hearing and saying none, I'll take a roll call vote. Carol?
Carol, off this shift.
Ian?
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Michael?
Yes, sorry, having issues with my mute today.
Okay. Robert?
Yes.
And Laura Schiffer, yes. Thank you all very much.
Good night.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Good day.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your help, everyone, and your time. Okay, on to 2.2, stormwater management permitting process and procedures. Michael Crowley?
It's me again, yep. So I'm here because I just love some, some guidance from the planning board. So we have a stormwater management bylaw and regulations and an application that are all laid out, and they're on the code, and I can share that if you'd like. They are actually really great. They're like the best well-written regulations I've seen so far. They're really intuitive, they're easy to explain to the applicant, they, they do a great job of setting examples. So first off, kudos to all of you on what is definitely my favorite regulation. But I did have one question for guidance. In reading through it, I found something that I was uncertain about, and I would love to get some more, just some feedback from the planning board. So I'm going to share my screen again, just to demonstrate if that's okay. All right, so, oh, hold on a second, there we go, too many things popping up. So we have, in front of us, we have the stormwater bylaw, right here on Ecode, and additionally, sorry, this is having, giving me an issue with opening multiple tabs, so I have to move these tabs over. And there's also the regulations under the planning board page that include, again, like I said, these are very robust, they do a great job of outlining a lot of things. One of the things that now we're kind of managing this in practice is there's something that popped up in terms of management. In the stormwater bylaw, it says it shall, there are a lot of things laid out. In particular, it spells out that in the stormwater bylaw, that all, it shall apply to all projects. It gives some examples of regulated activities. These are, shall include but not be limited to, so things like land disturbance greater than 40,000 square feet, to something as small as 1,000 square feet, where there's a 15% or greater slope. So this is the smaller area, and this is the larger area outlined. So it's got a wide array of things that it catches. They are also then well delineated, again, why I like this a lot, in the stormwater regulations that the planning board has put out, where it has great guidance about what is a minor project, what is a major project. Minor projects include some of those examples that we mentioned, and like 1,000 square feet, but with a slope. Major projects, including larger ones. It's, again, a really excellent, well-laid-out regulation and bylaw, and I'm very, very grateful for it. And again, lots of stuff, it's very clear, it's very helpful, there's even a nice little chart that applicants have really told me is really helpful for them, having this idea of what's a minor project, what's a major project. My question is more, not so much about what kind is a major or minor project, which, when a stormwater application comes in, according to the regulations, I determine if it's a major or minor project. If it's a major project, I then hand it to the planning board. If it's a minor project, it gets handed to the point, the, the outlined authority under the regulation. Mine is about a different kind of category. So in addition to major and minor, in the regulations, there are specific things that are laid out for non-applicable or excluded. Let me see where I found that in here. Major, minor, sorry for scrolling, for scrolling around, I can't remember which one of these two it is. Minor, exempt activities. So there's a good, again, a good list of exempt activities, six different activities that are not, that are exempted. You don't need to come and get a stormwater management permit, which include repair of septic systems, normal maintenance of town-owned public ways, construction of utilities that won't alter drainage and drain. There isn't a category, though, for, it's either major, minor, or exempt. There's no category for non-applicable. So for example, according to the regulations right now, if a homeowner wants to repave the driveway, they need to put in a stormwater management permit, because there is no minimum area for outline. It's outlined in the bylaw as all projects, and it's outlined in regulations of some examples, including but not excluding. So one of the things that I've run into is when we've had projects come in, in smaller-scale projects, I've been following the regulations and saying, this is a major and this is minor. However, I'm curious, and we haven't had one yet, what is the planning board's guidance on small-scale projects that weren't encompassed? So if a homeowner wants to repave their driveway, is, according to the regulations, it feels like it's required that you have a stormwater management plan. Additionally, there is one other thing that might be of merit, where a lot of this area is calculated off of area of impervious surface. And one of the things that's alluded to in the regulations is that it shall include repair of impervious surfaces, but it doesn't necessarily say, is this the total amount of impervious surface? So for example, if there was a warehouse that was just under 40,000 feet, and then they wanted to add a wing to it that would push the surf area over 40,000 square feet, does that now make it a major project, or is it just the building that's being added on to? So I was just looking for some guidance in how to interpret this going forward. If there is something that the planning board wants, but like, oh, yeah, we meant to do this, or, no, no, this is it exactly, that's great, it would just be helpful if I could get it, and in particular, if I could get something in writing, so that when I'm talking with applicants, I can showcase with them, and they can have everything upfront and informational. So that's a lot. I hope that works for you guys in terms of a question. I'm going to stop sharing my screen, but I'll pull it up if we need it.
So, Beth, are you there?
I am, yep.
Okay. I just had my driveway paved. Now, I didn't do it, I hired a company to do it. Now, are the companies, I'm going to answer your question with a question, are the companies supposed to pull a permit to pave a driveway? Are they supposed to know about the stormwater bylaws for each house? I mean, there, there've been hundreds of houses that have had their driveways paved. So I, I don't know how that comes into play, or how do we, is it, is this by, bylaw or regulation that we have ambiguous? Like, what are we doing?
If I can clarify, it's not ambiguous. It's very clear. It says that it, stormwater applies to all projects. That's what's the regulation, the planning board regulation starts with, and I'll share that just specifically, just so you can see that one feature, because that is, that is kind of why I'm here. I wanted to confirm that that was what everyone on the planning board wanted me to adhere to. So under the stormwater management, it says right here, all projects. So all projects are required according to the regulations. Now, if that's not what the planning board intends, that's fine. You can, you can write me some guidance, and I can follow that while you revisit the regulations to be more encompassing of what the intent was. I get the sense that this was a really well-written-out and concise thing, and these are just kind of the administrative things. You're like, oh, once we start doing this, we realize there's a few more things we could kind of consider that we hadn't considered in the first place. But at, at the moment, it does say very clearly, all projects. So yes, according to the regulations as they currently stand, if you put in driveway, if you repaved your driveway, you are required to be, put in a stormwater management application. So that's why I wanted that guidance, is because if that is in fact what the planning board wanted and put in place for that reason, I'm happy to carry that out. If the planning board wanted to add more thought to that, I can follow whatever the planning board's recommendations are. I just would really love it in writing whatever the consideration is.
How does this work with the, because, because I have an issue, actually, with my driveway, and with the town, and the road that ends up in my driveway. So, and it's all rocks from the road. How do we, how do we handle the stormwater with all the paving that the highway does? I mean, the project...
To answer that question, for public roadways, there is a specific section that encovers exempted activities. That includes the improvement of public ways. So that is exempted by regulation, and that was, and these are, there are some things that are outlined in the bylaw, and some things that are outlined in the planning board regulations. And most of the specific information, including the verbiage about all projects and that kind of stuff, that's in the planning board regulations. So that's totally in your purview to discuss and, and develop as you see fit. There's the bylaw stuff, which is, just showcases that it's important and defers a lot of authority to you. But the section about all projects, that is within the planning board's regulations, so that's something that the planning board can work on.
I, I can tell you that I've never paid attention to this before, so I was not part of these. And I don't even know if when the planning board accepted this, this was a template from the state, or from another like-sized town, that was not developed by the, can, do you have the date on this?
I can see what I have, let's see what I have right here. Let's go up to the regulations. It's usually at the top, I feel like. The regulations, 2014.
Okay, so...
But that being said, this, you're the planning board now, so you guys get to decide what you'd like to do. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting it, I'll be, I'll be right back. I apologize for having to stop off. I'll be back in just a moment, I apologize. So I'll let you guys discuss. I'm, I'll be right back, I swear.
Okay, so to the board, I, this is 2014, so that's eight years ago. I, I do not believe I was on the planning board at that time. I do remember hearing, when I first got on the board, about the stormwater regulations, but not any one of us knows everything. So each of us brings our own perspective or our expertise to the table when we, when we are here discussing things at planning board. So mine is more about assessing and housing and developing. Robert, I think you're an engineer? Is that your background?
Architectural and engineer.
Okay, okay. I know nothing about that. Michael is finance. Ian is in the military and does intelligence. I don't know, I don't have any background to what the rest of you have. So we all come to the table here, and we are trying to do the best we can for Townsend, and address whatever issues come before us.
I, I think I have some concepts that will help things here.
Thank you, because I don't.
All right. As far as driveway repayment goes, if you apply this as if it was a building project, that was pre-existing, before the bylaw or whatever, I would consider this ordinary repair. I wouldn't burden a homeowner with getting a permit for such a thing, or burden the homeowner with civil engineering. The more we burden a property owner, the less likely he's to do the improvement. In other words, a certain percentage of them will not do the improvement, and that's not to the betterment of our town. So in terms of Mike's needs here, he's brought something to our attention. I don't think the intent of the bylaw, or the, the text that was written, was for pre-existing things necessarily. I think it was an opportunity for mostly major development, and maybe specific loci in a certain part of town has a particular problem. So I, as far as our board goes, and again, there may be other circumstances beyond the example that Michael presented here. I mean, he brought up the subject of paving of driveways and things.
Because the text, it says, small projects like 1,000 square feet or less.
Well, that's not a lot of space.
No, it's not. So Michael is back on with us now.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I apologize. I, every night, say goodnight to my daughter, and it's eight o'clock, and I thought we would be on to the next action item, and I could sneak off without interrupting anyone, so I apologize for stepping away, but let's be honest, this is more important to me to do, say goodnight to her. So, sorry to joke at y'all, but it's the truth.
Okay.
But I'm back, yes.
Robert brought up a good point, but in the point that he brings up, I would agree with him, absolutely, that individual homeowners with pre-existing properties should not be burdened with engineering, or permitting, or stormwater drains, when they're making repairs to their home. So I agree with that, but the thing that got me about the verbiage on this, from 2014, is that it says management. It's stormwater management, which means you are continually managing everyone's property here in town. Am, am I wrong, Beth? I, I totally, I am not an astute.
That's correct. And, and what happens is, this is all part of the town's stormwater permit. Every little part of this goes into our town permit. It's called an MS4 permit. Not real familiar with it, but it all contributes to our compliance with the town's permit of stormwater runoff and management.
So what would you propose? I mean, I'm not a proponent of burdening homeowners. I'm not.
I think, if, if I may speak, Madam Chair, I wasn't sure if that was a question for me, or just in general. I, I think it's, it's worth having a conversation about this with the planning board, taking the time to figure out what they really, what, what is the best thing for Townsend, whether it's, is it to, to regulate every driveway repair, or are there other circumstances? I really liked the regulations, how well they're written, because they show that there's a gradient of things. So for example, and this, just to give a real case example, we have a homeowner right now who is regrading their yard. They are bringing in fill, and they are altering a slope, an area of 1,000 square feet, and a slope greater than 15%. So it's clearly outlined as a minor project for stormwater. Like, that is a very specific example. And in this case, there was, you know, the owner, I've spoken to the owner, they're, they're happy. they're happy to work. Minor projects are very, um, easy to work on, including you can have hand-drawn annotated plans for whatever, with a crayon if you wanted to. I would not recommend that. The requirements for minor projects are a lot smaller than the major projects. So that's good that there's that delineation. But in that case, there was literal dirt running off of the yard into other spaces. And without having, say, storm, stormwater swells or even, um, hay bales to stop, that soil can run off into roadways, not for this busy act, but could be running into the neighbor's yard or roadways. In that case, there's, um, the earth excavation permit required with the building inspector, that doesn't, that doesn't cover soil being brought in, only soil removed. We found out through a long and complicated process, it being very thorough, that that particular project, aside from stormwater management, has no permit applications whatsoever. And if it hadn't been for the slope being 15%, a person could bring any amount of soil and just pile it up on their yard. But since that runoff could run into roadways and be running into drainage systems that the town then pays to maintain, that is why stormwater was put in. So I think what it was, is I think they did an awesome job on major, really good job, a really excellent job on minor. They've got some very solid exempted activities. And I, my request for consideration is should there be a fourth category of, um, exempted activities? Is there, should there maybe be something, you know, it's very clear, everything above this line is major, everything between here and here is minor, but maybe there should be something here that's like, come on in, have a conversation and we'll tell you, no, 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 you're fine. Or should there be, is it that the planning board wants us to regulate every driveway in town?
So exempt would be a residential driveway?
Uh, well, I wouldn't, I don't know if it would be exempt, it could be exempt if that's what the planning board wants, or it could be non-applicable. Um, it could be something that you come in and you have to say, I'm gonna do, you know, here's my form that says this is the project I'm gonna do. I'm just gonna repave the driveway and here's a surface area. And then administratively, Beth or I or whoever is delegated can be like, all right, that's what you're doing, that's fine. Just to help clarify.
So I agree with Robert in that, we don't want to burden our homeowners, okay? So, but I, I really think that this was a template that was passed over to us. And Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, cause I go to all the town meetings, I believe that in that year, 2014, we were mandated, the towns were mandated to have a stormwater management program. I'm gonna bet you anything, we did not develop it. It was given to us by someone and then adopted at town hall, town meeting. You can look at.
It is a planning board regulation, so it was approved by the planning board at the time. So you, you have, you, you have that perfect, that's, that's, sorry, if, if I wasn't being clear. So this is something that I would, I think it's worthy of a large discussion and for you guys to take some time to think about and think about whether or not you want to make changes to the regulation. And if you, if there is a change you want to make and you want me to have something, a practice that's different than the regulations spell out while you're working on that, and if you just send me something, an official thing from the planning board in writing saying we'd like you to use some judgment or something like that, that's fine. I want to be fair and transparent about everything I do. I do think this is something that if it's worth doing, it's worth having a good conversation about to really make sure it meets what the planning board feels is most appropriate.
Okay. So we'll, we'll put this on another meeting, cause we have, I, it's getting late. I do have master plan for tonight and I want to make some dent in it. We'll put this on for another meeting if the planning board members would take a look at, um, this document and then we can have a discussion at another meeting. I'm very concerned about the fact that it does say management, that it is under planning board purview, that land use has to basically follow the management plan, which is not feasible. If you're telling me that everything over a thousand square feet need, and you're gonna pave it, that is not manageable for the town to police. Cause management and, and if this is a regulation, that means you have to enforce it. And if you're not enforcing all of it, you can't enforce any of it. Cause it's not fair to enforce just the things you're able to do instead of enforcing it equally with everyone. And that's where I, I always come from, that, that realm. Yep. Everyone gets treated equally. So it, it's, it's, it's not feasible. Just reading those few parts, it's not feasible. So we do, we should look at that again and make some, as you said, well, we can't be exempt because if the town is exempt, and I can tell you the town has plenty of its own runoff that's damaging other property. And if we can't manage what the town does, why should we police, be policing individual homeowners? Okay? All right. So up for another discussion. Thank you for bringing that to our attention and we look forward for something else to be working on.
Yeah, thank you for, for that. I, I just, I wanted to make sure that that reflected what the planning board thought was most appropriate. I always give deference to the planning board as the authority, especially where it's laid out so well in regulations. But I, I had a feeling that this was something that the planning board would want to discuss further and maybe hadn't had the opportunity to see how operationally it's been handled because they haven't had a land use coordinator who's been telling them what's going on in town. So I'm just here to coordinate land use in case anyone was wondering why I'm here. And so I'm here coordinating with you guys because you're the authority. So thanks so much for that and, um, I'm happy to have conversations.
And thank you for bringing.
Documents. There's any recommendations I can help with, please feel free to reach out, but I'll be a resource to you. Thank you.
Make sure everyone on the board has that regulation, access to the regulation and they can study it and I'll have it on the next agenda. We can, we can see what we have so far, but what I see is something that is not enforceable. So right now, as it stands, it's not humanly possible for you alone to be enforcing just that one thing and still do your other job. You know, everything else that you have to do. Okay, so thank you, Michael. 2.3 is the master plan. And Beth, I, I have a, I have something I'd like to read into, um, our record, that meetings were not, they're not really the law. Okay? And they, um, a comment was made at the last meeting and it is on tape, that the planning board does not have the authority to make any changes to the master plan as being presented to us. So because this is not a true statement, I'm going to read this into the record. It is part of, I should tell you where it comes from. It's Administration of the Government Title VII Cities, Towns and Districts, Chapter 41, Officers and Employees of Cities, Towns and Districts, Section 81D, which is the planning board. Of that section 81D, I am going to read number nine. Implementation Program Element, which defines municipal actions necessary to achieve the objective of, of each element of the master or study plan. Scheduled expansion or replacement of public facilities or circulation system components and the anticipated costs and revenues associated with accomplishment of such activities shall be detailed in this element. The element shall specify the process by which the municipality's regulatory structures shall be amended so as to be consistent with the master plan. Such a plan shall be made and may be added to or changed from time to time by a majority vote of such planning board and shall be public record. The planning board shall, upon completion of any plan or report or any change or amendment to the plan or report produced or amendment thereto to the Department of Housing and Community Development, that's the state. A city or town which has established master study plan under Section 81A and applies for a state grant from any of the Commonwealth shall prepare and keep on file within such city or town an economic development supplement, provided however that such city or towns shall not be required to prepare such supplement if such city or town has a supplement on file. Such supplements shall be at least one page in length and shall contain the goals of the city or town with respect to the industrial or commercial development, affordable housing and preservation of parks and open space. That's part of the law. That's what falls within our jurisdiction. We as a board approve the master plan and we submit it to the Board of Selectmen. It does not have to be voted by the town. It doesn't have to be voted by the Board of Selectmen. It's part of the elected duties of the planning board. Beth, thank you for sending me that section. I wanted it written into the record. And as many who are on, uh, Robert, you're new, but, um, Ian has been on, Carol's been on, Mike's been on, myself for the past year, for some of you. Carol's been on with me two or three years anyway, the whole extra, Carol's been on the whole time of the three years that the document. Yes. Through the, yes. And Julie was on, she's, she isn't on now, but Julie, myself and Carol made some edits to the master plan, uh, most of which were not, um, they're, they're, they're just mostly, um, edits, grammatical or a word here or there, like that. The, those are not the issues. The issue is some of the data that's used is a bit outdated. And, um, my suggestion to Beth, and I don't know if you were able to put the, get that together, but was the, um, the goals of the housing production plan? We talked about just the goals of the plan, the full in production plan, but we're just out. Carol also had, um, some changes. Carol, do you want to speak to yours?
Mostly, mostly, most of my changes editorial, but, um, I thought, there was one place, um, in the economic development section where they talk about, uh, an impact study from 2004 about rail trails. And I was just, thought that 2004 was like really old data. If they couldn't come up with something more, um, better, uh, more.
Yeah. I, I don't.
And I think it talks.
Current. And plus, we already have the rail trail.
Yeah. And the other thing is.
We now have a rail trail.
It, it talks about home prices, um, from this study that home prices aren't, have a, are along the rail trail are priced higher. But this is from a 2004 study. And in today's environment, I don't know how much, I mean, houses are going out of sight when they go up for sale. It's just like unbelievable. When a house up here in Timbly Park goes up for sale and they have an open house, it's probably two dozen cars out front and then the contingent sign goes up the next day and it's like $50,000 over asking price. So I don't really think in today's environment, how much a rail trail and having a house along the trail is gonna increase the price of the house. I don't know. But a lot of the, a lot of this information, they based on old, very old, very old studies, more than 10 years old in some cases.
Beth, do you have any suggestions for us as to how we, we need to have a plan? Because we need to have a plan that says we're gonna do something in order for us to submit one that will help us get grants. It was right in what I just read. It, it's a, it's a, it's a document that we have a necessity to have. And it's been three years and we have a product that is.
Yeah.
You know. Went into what they tried to do. And I do, and I, I know what it all means, cause I know what it just means for us to review it, let alone, you know, to do it. But how, how do we submit something like this?
That's great, that's a great question. Um, and at this point, I mean, some of the stuff is, you know, administer, ministerial in terms of adding and correcting edits. Some of it is a more substantive and, you know, talking about updating data, which affects the whole document. And like including the housing production plan goals, I haven't done that yet, but that's not a very big, um, you know, not, that's not a very difficult thing to do. But it's the addendum and the updating of data. So I wonder if that might, huh, you know, I'm wondering if that might just be something that could be done again through like a DLTA grant without, but the problem is, you know, I, you don't want to delay it any further. So you, I would, I would, I wouldn't be comfortable doing that because you're talking about re, you know, doing all the graphics, doing all the charts. I, I would defer that to a professional, um, statistician.
Like our master plan, it's not a plan that gets approved by the state like the HPP housing production.
No.
So we just submit.
Filed. It just gets filed. You're right. You're correct.
I, I know one of the problems Jeanne had in particular was that she looked at other, um, master plans. She looked at what the state guidelines were for a master plan and this did not follow the state guidelines. That was one of the problems. So how do we piece together something? Because as I, I've stated this before in several meetings at planning when we discussed the master plan, that in the future, we're gonna take a section at a time each year and do an update. So this will never be five years behind again, or 10 or 15 years without a master plan. So I think when it becomes a regular thing that you can update, um, it becomes a more viable document. So, and of course, pretty soon we're gonna have, I don't even know if they're out yet, the 2020 census will be out at some point. So again, we'll be, we'll just update it. You don't have to have a master plan committee. Right. You have one because you want to get other people involved and you want other ideas and other thoughts. But if you can't get a good product that's gonna help you get grants, this is not the way to go. This has been not a, a good experience the last three years. And we can't even blame it all on COVID because all of us kept going. You know, we did things through Zoom. We kept going through this whole process, but the plan couldn't seem to get going. So any suggestions?
I think you're absolutely right. Things have changed. There were, I think we, it's a big, um, task to try to redo an entire one. But we certainly can update and modify things. Can establish long-term objectives. And we can identify problems that are existing now and try to do things now that we can get grant funding to correct some, you know, priority problems that are existing. Some, you know, priority problems that are existing. And so that we can keep the town moving forward and progressing on it. Um. I have seen a lot of master plans that. Some are prepared by professionals and I can understand why because it's such an adulting task. Um, and it's communities who usually want them completed with X amount of days and they. Enter these big contracts, um, and. What I've seen in those kinds of situations, a large number of them. Um, are not comprehensive. They're just, they fill the contract and. Um, the towns end up not even. Um, pursuing, following the guidance that they were given from the consultant. And only because it was unacceptable to the community. Um, town of.
On a shelf that nobody looked at.
Well, yeah, you know, he said, well, we had a professional go by him. Well, if you just go by him, nobody's challenging what he's saying and. Then they start implementing it and the, the public at large didn't know what it was or what they were doing. And found themselves in an entirely different situation than they ever thought and. Uh, there was a lot of resistance and, you know, people being upset. Um, just as a, on a personal level, right here in Townsend. Um, when they were putting the bike trail in. I didn't know it. I couldn't understand where they're cutting all these trees now and. What's going on over there? I, I, I didn't have an awareness of and that's probably my own negligence, but. Um.
Making, ten years, ten years in the making.
Okay, so that's my, that's my problem, not yours, but what I'm saying to you, that happens so frequently to the people. Um, and so, uh, particularly with regarding to traffic and traffic patterns and things like that. Um, some of these consultants recommend these really expensive programs. And, and then they get rejected. I, I can probably tell you four different ones I know of that have happened in the last years. Uh, where the communities, uh, decided to implement these things and the public at large stopped it. And, um, so I guess the approach that we should take is bite off what we can handle and chew. And get at least that component in a satisfactory way. Um, try to object, you know, identify problems we have now that. Need some priority attention and try to get funding for that. And, uh, and then start coming up with some foresight. For, you know, the years ahead and, um. So I, all these topics all into play, housing and, and traffic counts and, and stuff like that, but. Uh, our social climate is changing very rapidly, so. Um, um, you know, I think a lot of input from a lot of people will. Generate some kind of a medium approach that could be flexible and. Um, you know, give future planning boards some movement and, uh, some direction. But that's all I have to say. I don't want to get too wordy with this, but.
Okay, so Beth, um. And I think if it pleases the board, I'm gonna work with Beth on trying to. Um. See what we can salvage from the document brought forward and. As long as we're covering all of the topics that are required by the state. Because this doesn't, i- in this section eighty-one D, it does not. Um, promote that this be a lengthy document, although m- many of the things. Um, do require like some maps and illustrations and whatnot, which are in the document. Then if we can maybe whittle that down a little bit. And then do an amendment that is more succinct with what our goals are. And then with our intent, um, as, as a board to update. Each, at least one section each year. I think that's going to give us a more viable, uh, document. Is the board okay with that?
I agree.
Okay, does it not, okay, does not require a vote and I would like to, um. Now go to two point four safe routes to school. Carol, do you want to give a report or do you have anything?
Um, actually, I, I've been emailing Rachel, who's our. Safe routes to school coordinator and, um, she, she's been trying to do this. Uh, I guess. That would be, uh, Spalding and Hoffman schools, but I guess the principal. That interest, um, so she's going, she can work with them on a one ability assessment. In the meantime, uh, there's a, she's going, she's going to conduct a bike safety session. At the Spalding School in June, um, and I kind of think because I have a granddaughter at the Spalding School. And they probably aren't that interested in the arrivals and dismissals because. Right when the, when the kids went back to school, right after COVID, when they finally returned. Nobody wanted their kids on the bus and I used to get in that line to pick up my granddaughter. And I could be in that line at Spalding School for like a half an hour. I mean, it's very, it was very organized. But it was down the street. Well, now that a, a lot of kids are back on the bus. And I was at the Spalding School the other day, that line is, is so much shorter. It's like not out on one nineteen, it's on that little.
Yeah, I do get to see it.
That little side road. So it's probably not that it's like shrunk down the arrival dismissal time. Um. But she's going into doing a walkability with the principals on the, um. With the school, she hopes to do that this summer, but the bike thing is going to be in June.
Okay, then you'll keep us posted on what's going on anyway. June what?
She didn't give me a date. She just said June. She didn't say a specific date.
Okay.
But I'll find out from her when the, um.
Okay.
And what kind of bike safety thing it is.
All right. I appreciate you doing that too. Um, okay, so two point five conservation referral notice for Squanacook Wildlife Management Area. Beth?
Yes, um, this was a rather large review and, um, I asked Mike if he would update the board. Cause he did have some time to go through it. So if you don't, through you, um, Adam Chair, if you will allow Mike to update everybody.
Yes, please. And is this something that we? We're supposed to? Do a referral or a thought on?
Yes, you, you offer comments and, um, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Please.
Sure. Oh, I'm here for anything anyone needs. Um, so, uh, Squanacook. Um, um, national, it, there, I'm gonna pull up a screenshot. It's gonna be the fastest way to get this through. Uh, one more time. I know I'm doing it all night tonight, so it's great. All right, so. Just for a reference, um, here we are in Townsend. This is the, um, wildlife management area. The Squanacook River Wildlife Management Area. It's a very large parcel. Um, you can see it's here behind where. Um, the Harvard Village Mall is along the town line and it continues south. Um, follows along the river extensively and has some stuff down in here. So it's a very large parcel in town. I think the, uh. Yeah, where is it? The acreage is usually in here. Um, the lot size is two hundred and fifty-eight acres. It's a pretty large area in general. Um, specifically, the project is a habitat management project, um, along the riverway. In town and in adjacent towns. So here again, you can see the river kind of sneaking down. Um, this is the map that's included with their application. Um, it, it's not the clearest map I've ever seen, unfortunately. Um, but the red box is outlining the properties in, uh, of the parcel that is being considered for the project. The pink annotates town lands, although they did miss a few town lands. Um, but I don't know, can you guys see my cursor when I'm hovering over anything?
Yeah.
Okay, good. This parcel right here is in fact town-owned land by the town of Townsend. Um, and this straight line here is the representative of the town line. So this is a large-scale project that's on both sides of town. Um, this is a multi-year management plan that's pretty robust. Um, the application included the documents which were over ninety-nine pages in length. Um, there is a lot of things being talked about. Um, they filed for a notice of intent to work within a wetlands area and within the buffer of the wetlands with the Conservation Commission. And as you can see, a lot of this work includes the riverbanks, includes areas that are wetlands. This is a, a pretty high priority wildlife habitat area, which is their habitat management plan proposal is for that habitat. But will impact obviously while they're out there doing the different proposed actions that they're talking about. Um, in terms of. Yeah, go ahead.
Interrupt a minute because I may have just missed the beginning of what you said.
Sure.
What is the work they're gonna be doing?
I haven't covered that yet, but no, it's a good question. So the work they're doing is extensive and varied. Um, it includes, uh, cutting, pruning, controlled fire, um, use of herbicides and, uh. On the properties. Uh, it's, 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 like I said, it's ninety-nine pages, uh, of just this overall plan. Um, that they submitted in addition to other applications. This is just the stuff that was like full out public right off the bat. And is, uh, as I'm scrolling through it, you might be able, I may find the section that talks about that a little bit more. Um, invasive, it's invasive plant control using herbicides. Um, we are being notified both as they're doing work within the wetlands, but also because we are. Because Townsend owns one of the adjacent properties. We are in a butter. Um, there's gonna be pulling, there's gonna be something called flame weeding with flame weeding, which is employing a propane torch to fly heat flame to targeted plants. Um, general vegetation control, cutting, um, as part of forestry management plan, uh, lots of projects to improve access. Um, for long-term ratings of the site, prescribed fire. So it's, this is a pretty massive project. Um, that is being proposed. So that's.
The state.
The date.
This is the state wildlife.
Yes, so this is a state-owned property by, uh, the Division of Fish and Wildlife and this is their habitat proposal on their property.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board?
None.
I, I think, um, I mean, obviously. The state is looking to do some cleanup and, um. Uh, maintenance. Of what should be done on their wildlife properties. And that's our understanding.
I'm sorry, but my internet is a little wonky. What was that? Can you repeat that, please?
So the state is, has seen this to be, um, obviously this is gonna be costing them a lot of money. It's gonna be a lot of, it's labor intensive to do what they're doing, right? So. They're protecting the wildlife in doing this project. This ongoing project. This is not.
I believe that is there, that the purpose that they're working on is improving, um, habitats for, for wildlife and the species of the properties.
Okay, so with our planning board hat on. We're. We as a planning board are being asked to make a comment. If we wish regarding their project.
Their comment is going to the Conservation Commission, while, but they will consider if they're hearing. Yeah.
Okay, for the Conservation Commission's approval.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a little bit different because it is, it's, uh, so they don't need to get anything. They're not coming to get anything from planning at the moment. They're coming to get an NOI from the Conservation Commission. And the Conservation Commission is following the best practices and extending the courtesy of making sure that the planning board has the opportunity to add comments and feedback.
Okay, what's NOI or NOI?
Notice of intent and, uh, it's a standard filing practice that if you're doing work in a wetlands area, you're. You have a public hearing to discuss it.
Okay, all right. Now I understand.
Well, that's great. Thank you so much. That's a great call out because I wear so many hats that, uh, and everyone has their own acronyms. So I, I always want to make sure everyone has a full understanding of what's going on. So please always call me on that.
Okay, so we know NOI is notice of intent.
Yep.
Okay. Um, any questions from the board or comments?
And I kinda like my comment. Um, we have. The state controls so much real estate in this town. And they haven't managed any of it. Uh, and, you know, we have state parks here that are neglected and rundown. Um, so this sounds like a very ambitious project. And with a lot of different aspects. I don't know if we have any influence in it at all because they may have authority way beyond what we can deal with. Um, but, and, but it's such a large pro- part of the property and. I don't even think our conservation people. Can address something of that magnitude. You know what I mean? It's, um.
Well, they, they don't have to. I think, I think they're, the state is giving an, and jump in, Mike, if I'm wrong. The state has given their notice of intent to the local conservation commission.
Right.
That this is what they're going to do.
Right.
Um.
An NOI, oh, go ahead. Sorry. I just wanted, yeah, and a notice of intent is a. You have, it's a, you have to have, get approval through the process of notice of intent from Conservation Commission. So it's not a, it's not, no, that's great. It's not a, just an informational sharing. It's like, you have to do this in order to do the project. In terms of that regulation mechanism additionally for your consideration, um, the part of their project is including herbicide use. And we have regulations in planning and zoning about herbicide use in aquifer protection areas, which this is. So that's the other intersection. Now at this time, there's no application or petition or anything for a waiver from that regulation. That you can't use herbicides in our aquifer protection planning. So that's the other intersection that hasn't been addressed yet, but is a planning and zoning thing and hopefully they make an effort to address that. But, um, they're working on the NOI right now.
Okay.
Cons con.
Okay, so I understand that the zoning aspect of the herbicide, because when you said that word before. That caught my attention when you were describing this. And then the other thing was, okay, they're gonna, it's for. Um. Habitat for endangered species. To. Robert's point. They are more interested in, is that all that it was? No, it was ninety-nine pages. So. Do you think that it's going to address any of the parks, like Robert said, any of their other state-owned land?
So this is an application from Division of Fish and Wildlife and they had to include a parcel ID in part of the application for a notice of intent. So there's a specific parcel. Um, Division of Fish and Wildlife can, can, uh, owns several parcels in town. And they are different than DCR State Parks and DCR, the, the forestry that is in the north side of town. These are all still owned by the state, but under different jurisdictions. But this application is only for the specific parcel. Um, and so it's just a gigantic parcel by any other consideration in town. Um, but yes, it is for a single parcel. So this, this project couldn't, they couldn't show up down the road. In Willard Brook and start working, doing prescribed fire because they got this. That's a whole different. It's, it'd be very similar to if, uh, the planning board made a decision about one property. And then cons con went and did something else on a different property. They're two different jurisdictions, even though they're owned by the town and in, at larger sense. So. Um, yep, that, that. So, um, yep, that, that, I hope that answers. Because it, I'm glad you're asking these questions because it's big, it's complicated, it's, there's a lot of moving parts.
So if there are no other comments or questions, um, I'm satisfied with your report and what you've said about that. Um, I I'm not sure I see planning making any real statement outside of just making sure that it complies with our regulations. It, not planning regulations, but that's the town's regulations. I mean, I don't see, I don't, am I missing something, Beth or Mike, that um planning needs to address specifically because of their request?
Well, I have one thought. I mean, and you just brought up the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. Um, you might, as a planning board, want to just mention that, you know, because we do have regulations over that district. So if there are any other areas in the wellhead protection zone, I don't know, Mike, if that's the case. Um, but you, you want to, you know, just be sure because there are special permits for work in those areas. The zoning board of appeals issues a special permit for um, for the Aquifer Protection Overlay District and groundwater protection district. So you could make a comment about those specific things, you know, where this, those are, you know, they're specifically drawn out in the regulations. Or you could just do the blanket overall. Either way.
No, I appreciate your uh input on that, Beth. And so why don't we make a statement like you just stated? Specific to the regulations, um, and our permitting process in those areas.
Okay.
Sensitive areas, in those sensitive areas.
Jurisdictional, yeah.
Can I make a comment?
I, I think you can, yes.
Well, that's quite a very special part of town. And um we've invested in bike paths and a boat launch down there. Um, as a child, I used to swim in the canal. Um, so this wildlife protection thing sounds like it might be restrictive for public recreation and use maybe. I, I, do you know what I mean? I, I just like, this could be a very valuable asset for our community. And uh so to know what's going on there is very important, I would think. Uh, so.
Well, Mike, can you answer his um concern over the location?
Sure, yeah. Uh, I, I, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
They own, this is, they own, not us.
So yes, this is a state-owned resource. Um, this uh in terms of that recreational resources. So for example, I, I'm not super familiar with all the logistics, but I believe the property has several trails that are recreationally open to any Massachusetts, to residents of Townsend and beyond. They could conceivably be closed while the work is going on. Um, it, again, that project would be limited to the area of the state-owned land in question. And so, for example, the rail trail, which does abut the property, um, that wouldn't necessarily change the use of the rail trail as that's going on. But, I mean, that could be a consideration for the planning board, certainly to think about is how that's going to impact. And I think that's one of the reasons you're deferred is how is this going to, not just impact that property, but other resources that we are, have the authority on in town. So how is this going to affect the butters or anything along those lines? So that's, again, totally in your purview and consideration to bring up.
Oh, Beth?
Yeah, oh, I was just going to uh kind of tag on to that. I noticed that on the referral, they've uh, they have not sought a referral comments from the water department. They have the fire department, land use coordinator, board of selectmen, board of health, building commissioner and highway and planning board. But you might want to suggest that they solicit comments from the water department, given the burning aspect of it and the wellhead protection zone on groundwater. So I would definitely, I mean, I would definitely recommend that. They want to reach out to the superintendent, yeah, yeah, for a comment. Yep.
Beth, could you add that to the comment? Does that satisfy you, Robert?
Absolutely.
Okay, um, now is, do I need a vote for this? And then do, do I sign that comment form?
Um, you don't have to, I can use the vote as your signature. So I would write the vote of the board members and the names of the board members and submit it to the cons con.
Okay, so can I have that motion as Beth described it? She'll write it up. Everybody okay on the intent of our discussion?
Yes.
Robert, you want to make the motion?
I do.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Carol. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And Robert?
Yes.
And Laura Schifrin votes yes. So we're unanimous on that. Thank you, Mike and Beth, very much for helping us get through that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's, it's a big project. I would not have expected you to be able to understand half of the things that are getting covered because they're comprehensive. Uh, so I'm glad that I could provide that kind of, whatever insights would be best facilitating to you, for sure.
We certainly appreciate what you and Beth are going to do over there.
Yeah. Um, I, if, if there is any, uh, just as an FYI, there's been a lot of conversations in the community about this project. Um, there's been a lot of people coming in with questions. Um, in particular, uh, there have been flyers going up around town on trees about the public hearing that some interested parties are putting up. I would just encourage that if there is any communication with the planning board members from the public about this project, that you defer them to reach out to the Conservation Commission because they're the ones holding the end, the notice of intent public hearing. So, uh, because you'll, you'll probably hear some scuttlebutt as this goes around town. So thanks, folks, so much.
Yeah, and just to note that the public hearing is on June 8th at 7:10 PM via Zoom. So if you personally want to attend.
That's the conservation?
Yes, conservation, um.
Public hearing?
That's the public hearing, exactly, for this NOI that you're writing the referral. So that's June 8th at 7:10 via Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. Next meeting, June 13th, 2022 at 6:30 PM remotely. Under correspondence, 3.1 notices from Townsend and other towns. Um, Michael, are you able to do that? If, if not, I can, if you don't have it up.
Um, if I may, Madam Chair, I did a summary. So if you, if you want to just to read the summary.
Let's do that. Michael, do you see it or do you want me to do it?
I, uh, Lori, if you could actually take care of that, my, the, I pulled that up on my phone and that died about uh 30 minutes ago.
Okay, I have it. Uh, 4.1 is Clerk's Summary of Public Notices from Other Towns. Capital Notice of Public Hearing Application for a Special Permit to Allow Removal of Stonewall, June 6, 2022, 7:05 PM remotely. Stone, Stonewall runs along the road between 65 Brookline Street and 45 Brookline Street, that is in Pepperell. In Groton, 1, ZBA Notice of Public Hearing Application for a Special Permit to Allow the Front and Side Setback for Reconstruction of an Existing Dwelling on a Nonconforming Lot, on Lot 123-3519, Indian Road. That's June 1st, 2022 at 6:30 PM in Groton Town Hall. Uh, number 2, ZBA Public Hearing Application for a Special Permit to Allow the Front and Side Setback for Reconstruction of an Existing Dwelling on a nonconforming lot, uh, 124-33 and 124-34, Indian Road. That is also 6, on June 1st, 2022 at 6:45 in Groton Hall. Um, ZBA Notice of Public Hearing Application for a Special Permit to Add a Porch Onto the Front of an Existing Dwelling on a Nonconforming Lot, 125-46, 14 Spruce Road, June 1st, 2022 at 7:00 PM in Groton Town Hall. Ashby ZBA Notice of Public Hearing Petition for the Expansion of a Nonconforming Structure at 26 Beaverton Road, June 14th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And that are the notices. And that, that encompasses the um notices from other towns you had on here as 3.1. And with the, um, we don't, we don't have to do the planning board decision on 221. That's just for information.
Exactly.
Okay. Um, and then we have okay, we do have something here. 3.2, appoint, appointment, appoint a member to the, to represent Townsend on the Monticentus Regional Planning Commission, MRPC. This appointment will begin on July 1st, 2022 and end June 30th, 2023. The representative should be a member of the planning board. Um, I have been the representative for a long time now. Remember then, but I currently serve in the second year as their treasurer. Um, I am willing to continue that service. Um, I find it very informative unless someone else would like to step up and, and do that. I'm happy to have someone else who would like to do it. Don't everyone jump at once. Okay, I will entertain a motion to appoint Laura Schifrin to represent the town on the Monticentus Regional Planning Commission, MRPC, uh, to begin July 1st, 2022 and end June 30th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So I can uh make a motion, Lori, let me see. Can I make a motion to what you said? Or I have to say, okay, yeah.
No, you don't have to say it.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay.
Trying to write it down.
No, she has the whole motion right in front of her.
I'll make the vote to Lori.
Okay, well, Michael made it, Robert seconded. Is that okay, Robert? Um, any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Michael?
Mike Barosko, yes, sorry.
Carol?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
And Robert?
Yes.
Laura Schifrin, yes, I accept. Okay, 3.3, Stormwater Permit Inspection Reports, Other Related Correspondence.
But uh, at this time, there was nothing that came in between the last meeting and this meeting, so no, no report.
Okay, so um, and just as a piggyback to 1.5, um, any other uh volunteer forms that are out there or the one that we did receive? Would you send um an email to those um asking them to attend some future meetings and thanking them for their volunteer form and asking them to attend? And we'll be making, it will be on the agenda again on uh June 13th. And, you know, maybe we'll have other volunteer forms as well. I think as long as we have a vacancy, we'll have it on our agenda.
Okay, yeah.
Um, any other business to come before the planning board? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:01 PM.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 9:01 PM.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There will be no discussion? All those in favor, Robert?
Aye.
Carol?
Yes.
Michael?
Mike Barosko, yes.
Ian?
Ian O'Dez, yes.
Thank you all for being here. I vote yes as well. Have a good night, thank you very much.